It is 5:30. So we'll call the meeting to order. If we would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everybody, this evening. It's also nice to see so many young kids here, young students, so welcome tonight. First item on the agenda is an executive session. And anybody want to make a motion? We're going to need 15 minutes to start off with. Is that consensus? Yes? 15? Okay. All right. Anybody want to make it? I will. I move that we go recess for an executive session for discussion of possible acquisition of real estate for economic development purposes pursuant to the preliminary discussion on the acquisition of real estate exception. And this is by KSA 75-4319-B-6. We'll come back at 15 minutes. That would be...
5:45.
Six. 5:46. Correct?
Yep.
5:46.
5:46.
5:46. Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although, who will be in the executive session? It'll be...
Kelly, myself, Jeff, and Chuck Goode and Trish Brown.
Okay. We will be back at 5:46. We are back in session, open session. There's an extra item on the agenda this evening that is to consider a agreement with Montgomery County regarding maintenance of portion of North Pupan Road. That'll be at the end of the agenda. Right now, we're going to adopt the consent agenda. Gentlemen, what would you like to do?
I'd like to remove items C and D into items for commission action.
Okay. Gary?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move items C and D. So to move those, we need a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda, items A, B, and E.
Okay. Second?
I'll second the motion.
They moved in second that we approved items mentioned. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Presentations. First one is congratulate Jim Duke on his retirement from the park and zoo. Is he here?
I'd like to introduce to you Jim Duke. He is retired effective November 1st from the zoo as a zookeeper for 17 years. He was hired February 7th, 2000, and he spent the last 17 years caring for the zoo animals, and he will definitely be missed. We presented him with a photo booth book, excuse me, of all the animals, and we had a little retirement party with his work staff. And Jim will be truly, truly missed. We already miss him. He hasn't been gone very long, and we truly miss him. He had a knack with the animals, and especially with the monkeys. Jim, if we couldn't get them in, Jim could get them in, in the castle. And we just want to present him with his certificate of appreciation for all his hard work these last 17 years, and we wish him a happy retirement.
And we want to thank you for your commitment and service to not only just the community but the city for 17 years. We'll miss you. And so somebody got a tip. When we get your picture here, why don't you get your best lookers to get right in the middle.
So Bart, how did you let it get away this way?
I didn't know you allowed retirement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Then we have swearing in of David J. as a patrol officer.
They got some laughs before. Why don't you turn around? There you go. I'd like to introduce everybody. This is our newest officer, David J. Okay, so you can turn around. Introduce you to the commission now. He just graduated from KLET-C last Friday. He grew up in Elk City, Kansas, and graduated from ICC in 2002 with an associate's degree in history. He served two separate tours in the U.S. Army from 1991 to 1997 with a year-long deployment in Bosnia in '96, and 2009 to currently with a tour in Iraq from mid-2010 to mid-2011. He has served a total of 13 years active duty, and he married his wife Katrina Joy in 2001 with whom he has four children, and they are all here tonight.
Wow.
So... Oh, three of them are here tonight? Okay. So without further ado, Mike, if you'd like to swear him in, sir.
All right. We're going to master that. David J. is... And repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
...and faithfully discharge the duties of police officer...
And faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
...for the city of Independence, Kansas.
For the city of Independence, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
You decide to join us. You're welcome. Sidehand. Thank you for your service.
Can we get a picture? It's been so long since I've taken a picture.
Supposed to stay in my eyes, sir.
Don't have a shirt on. Use the handcuffs.
You've got more dirt on me. I doubt that.
Most types of activities are the fun part. All right. Now we get to work. Public hearings. To consider condemnation of the following structures is dangerous and unsafe. The first public hearing is now open. It is for 223 West Main Street.
Yes. So this is one that was back up for consideration and for the agenda for this meeting. This one is a difficult one for the city. This building, as you can see in those pictures there, the rear of the building is getting Windows starting to come out on the second floor. Bricks are starting to come loose. We did speak with the realtor this week, and it does appear that there are a couple of people that are interested. We know that if it gets condemned, that makes it a little more difficult financially for people to buy this. Spoke with the engineer that originally looked at this about 14 months ago. Sent him photos of this recently. He said, "Yeah, this is getting worse." I asked him if it was an imminent danger of falling down on that wall, and he said, you know, there could be danger with the winter cycle, freeze and thaw, that those bricks get loose and localize, collapse area around the window and different things. So we have... It's our... Has been our thought to recommend condemnation for tonight. But we want to present this to you for your thought and your consideration. There is a tenant on the east side of the building that would have to relocate if this was... If this building was condemned. They are working to try to get it sold and rehabilitated. We want to try to do what's right, but we do know that it is getting worse and worse and worse as time goes, and that as the... If we have any kind of winter weather, it's just going to get... It's just going to accelerate the condition that it's in now.
Well, the windows, the arches could be short up. They could come in with some framing to stabilize the openings, since that's where the major problem is.
Right.
And, you know, I think if they're interested in purchasing, if somebody's working on it, and some work would be done to stabilize those openings, then I could see working with them till they could secure financing. But, you know, there is a problem with particularly the lower opening. It looks like a double door.
Right.
There's a lot of differential movement. That needs attention. But if those openings, if they come in and do some framing to stabilize them...
Right.
...then we could see an effort being made, and we wouldn't have to be so concerned with immediate falling a brick or a problem of falling glass or windows.
Are you talking about the building owner making those?
I don't care who. If there's an interested party, and they want to invest in the shoring, it's not a lot of money to do that, but it would definitely show an interest. And if financing is getting that close that they could... Whoever did it, I think, would be fine with me to preserve the building.
Well, we don't want to keep delaying in the hope that there might be a sale.
How much time are you going to recommend?
Initially, this morning, I was going to recommend till the next commission meeting, but that's probably not enough time. So I would say in...
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Done.
Or you, you know, you could take that back to them and come next week or the next meeting.
We're still in a public hearing, right?
Yeah. So we're still... What we would like to do...
Are they here?
I would like to report the next meeting, what the progress has been. I would like to do that to see that there is legitimate, legitimate interest and movement towards doing that. What we would like to...
I mean, that's good.
What we would like to get permission to do is to close off access to that sidewalk and barricade back behind in the grassy area so that there's no access to the south for people to... At least it's barricaded, and they know that they shouldn't be in that area, and also the sidewalk on the west side.
We had done that already at one point, right?
We have done that. We'd like to take measures to make it maybe a little...
Don't say permanent.
Less easy, not as easy for people to use that sidewalk in that area.
Okay. So you can bring back some sort of progress report to us?
Well, the... I don't know if Amber had given you, sent emails to you when we had spoken. She said that she was going to send emails to you, kind of explaining where we are, where she was with that, and so...
There was no timeline. There wasn't...
There's no timeline, and, you know, and I think it's hard for her to give a timeline. Where... I just think we're reaching a critical period where we need to try to do something. Either it needs to be sold and somebody try to start putting money in it, or at least stabilizing it so it doesn't get worse, or... I mean, you know, we would like... I mean, certainly our hope that this building is rehabilitated.
We want to save it.
We want to save the building, but we also have to look at the reality of what's happening to it and the fact that there... Safety for the public and safety for, you know, everybody involved.
So just to make sure I'm clear, Don, the current owners are not able to invest the necessary money to make this building safe, and...
Do you want to speak, or?
No. That would be a big problem.
Okay. And so the... You've not spoken to the potential buyers, the buyers that are...
I don't... I have not at this point talked to this potential buyer.
So we don't know if they're aware of the...
Well, I think they... According to Amber, I think they've looked at it, and they're aware that there are issues. And I think, you know, they're trying to look at what the figures would be to rehabilitate it. I mean, I think one of the figures that they got was, you know, extremely high, in excess of $150,000, so...
So you can bring us a report in two weeks?
Yes.
Twenty seconds.
I can give you a progress report.
And then Jerry, the public hearing...
And I did ask the... I did ask the engineer, does he feel like it's imminent falling? He said, "No. If something were to happen, it would be localized," and he feels confident that, you know, that 30 days would be, you know, wouldn't make a difference one way or the other.
In the interim, we'll make it safe, you know, with the sidewalk and so...
Right.
...what Don talked about. We'll keep it... I mean, that's on us to do that, so we don't need council or commission action, but so we'll do that in the interim right away.
Yes. So we can just post or close... No, extend. Adjourn the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing, and then... Are you going to adjourn it for 30 days, and Don's going to give you a progress report at the next meeting, or are we going to resume it?
Progress report at the next meeting and...
And then resume the public hearing?
In 30 days.
Yes.
On December 14th.
Yeah. Otherwise, we have to start the process all over again, right?
Yeah. That ought to be sufficient time for people to...
I hope so. I would like to...
Well, if they understand the timeline, then that's the timeline. All right. We good with that? Good? So we need to make a motion to do that, or we're just going to...
No.
That's what I saw. So we're good. Adjourn it till December 14th.
But it does require a motion.
Make a motion that we extend hearing until December 14th, 2017, here at the city commission meeting. Would it be a second?
All second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Done with that one. Open the hearing then for 725 North Penn Avenue.
There continues to be some progress on this, and it would be staff's recommendation that we adjourn for 60 days on this pending them continuing with working on that. Now, we do have a concern about the garage, the detached garages, and not in good shape.
Right.
So we may be taking action on that separately to condemn that structure separately.
That's not attached. It is just right adjacent to it.
Detached.
It is detached.
Yes.
Detached.
Detached, yeah.
Questions?
This is the public hearing. Is the owner here, or any members of the public that want to comment on this? Okay. Just make sure.
Okay. So you want to extend it for 60 days?
Yes.
I had it that we were going to extend it to December 28th.
Oh, December 28th. Yes. Sorry. Been a long day.
December 28th.
December 28th.
Okay. Close the hearing. Would there be a motion? Into...
I make a motion. Will you adjourn the hearing till December 28th?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then the last one is open the hearing for 1228 North Sixth Street.
This is one that had two fires. I think that's a period of two or three days. Making... Framing's been done. Electrical's been done. Drywall is up. Flooring's going in. Cabinetry and different things, so they're getting ready to finish. Pleased with the progress that's being made moving forward. And I would say if we were to adjourn it for 60 days, we should be... That project should be completed well in advance of that.
Okay. The owner here? This is good. Okay. Questions by the commission then?
January.
So this would be extended until January?
Yeah. Adjourn it until January 25th.
25th?
Yeah. 25th.
Make that motion, somebody? Close hearing.
I make a motion that we adjourn the hearing till January 25th, 2018.
Second. Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're ready to move into items for commission action. The first one is item C. You can wait a few more minutes, Kenny. Let's go ahead and move. Yeah. Item D will be first in the interest of time since he can go back to Wichita. This is consider authorizing the mayor to sign a natural gas sales agreement with Intherm LLC and any related documents. I'm going to excuse myself from this for commission to consider, since this does involve Green Bush.
The remaining commissioners. We've been working with David Banks from Flint Hills Energy Consultants, and he has worked with, as the mayor pointed out, Green Bush. But we've been working with looking at what they call gas transport. I'll have David come up and go through the analysis that he has performed. As you can see from the RSA, it shows two of our buildings would show significant savings, especially the one on Memorial, around Laurel. So I'll let Mr. Banks go through the analysis and...
I don't know how familiar you are with transporting natural gas. In the early 80s, the state of Kansas opened up retail gas sales to certain classes of customer. Prior to that, everything was through a monopoly of the monopolized utility companies. And essentially, your utility company has a cost of gas rider that is a portion of your gas bill, and that's for the purchase of the commodity itself. And your utility company is in the unenviable position of having to purchase gas for the worst-case scenario. Under that scenario, they usually purchase too much gas, and there is a point in time that they release that back at a lower price. That option for purchase of that gas at that point in time is then open to those folk who, under retail wheeling, are eligible to purchase that gas and result in savings. Analyzing that process for the two buildings that qualify under the tariff minimums that are necessary, the 410 North 10 Memorial Hall, if you had been transporting gas through our Green Bush Energy Group the previous 12 months, your cost would have been roughly $3,107 lower than what it was. And at 901 West Laurel, Building D, during that same period, your costs would have been approximately $15,920 less than what they were. The Green Bush Energy Group is a buying consortium made up predominantly of school districts. There are 47 school districts, three municipalities, and one community college that are members of that group. Roughly 6,500,000 units of gas are purchased jointly under our contract, and the resultant savings from such a large purchase gets passed on to the members. You have approximately 120,000 units of gas that would be added to that group beginning in January 1. We put out an RFP on an annual basis to all of the vendors representing the multiple utilities in the state, and we asked for responses. We had five responses, and we do an RFP, not a bid process, because we negotiate favorable contract language. Price is certainly a big factor in that, but also contract indemnification and risk indemnification, because there are penalties if you don't manage this process well. In the 22 years that the Green Bush Group has done it, they have never incurred a penalty. Any additional information? I'd try and answer for you, but I believe if it is the will of the commission to go forward with this, I think that savings would extend well into the future. And I think you could look at somewhere in the neighborhood of $18,000 to $20,000 a year, lower gas costs utilizing these two facilities.
What about the transportation cost to Atmos? There's still some cost that we'll have to Atmos for transporting the gas and metering.
Those things are factored in. Essentially, your customer charge with Atmos changes. It goes up when you become a transport customer. They have two other requirements that are as a cost associated with. One is a $30 electronic metering fee that you pay $30 a month. The other one is you have to maintain a phone line to that electronic meter. In my cost analysis that I did for you, I put $50 a month for the phone line, factored in the increased customer charge and the $30 a month. So most of those costs have been accurately, except for the phone line, which was estimated, have been accurately reported in those savings.
So the figures that you were quoting included those fees that would still be occurring from Atmos?
Yes.
What you gave us was not just raw gas...
No.
...figures, but it did include those?
It included the cost of Atmos, and it also included the costs associated with joining the Green Bush Energy Group.
Okay. Did you have a written summary or proposal of this?
I have provided that to the city manager previously, and I'd be more than happy to get you other copies. I happen to have some with me, but I could give you some more if you need it.
Could you get us copies of that for our record after? Yeah. Okay.
So is it fair to say that Intherm is a broker?
Yes. Intherm is a gas broker. Certainly, they are fairly new into the marketplace, into the Kansas marketplace. They serve customers in Oklahoma, Colorado, Nebraska, Wyoming, and Kansas. They have been serving the Green Bush Energy Group for the last three years. Very, very well-respected members within that company. Most of them, just to be honest with you, were employees of One Oak at one time and came through the Kansas system in learning the gas business. And they are backed by large supply contracts with the likes of BP and many of the other large gas suppliers. And they have their own credit facility, so they are roughly about eight... About $80 million worth of gas credit. So I think that on, unless something incredible happened, we don't have to worry about them defaulting. They are serving about nine BCF of gas a year currently. I would... And because of the contract indemnifications that are there, there are provisions that if something would start to happen, as we track that, there is a process whereby the members of the Green Bush Group can say, "No, we want to get out. We want to go back to our utility." That's part of that contract indemnification that we had. It just requires 30 days' notice.
And the contract or agreement is for one year at a time with the option for two one-year extensions?
Typically, we have bid one year with up to three one-year extensions. That has fallen on the school districts timeframe being July 1 through June 30th, but prices are held in effect until January 1. So if you would join on this time, the Green Bush... The Intherm fee is they basically, the cost of gas, index value of the gas plus 30 cents, and that's what they get. That's their portion that they make their money out of, and they hold that fee for us until January 1. After January 1, we'd have to negotiate something different.
That's 30 cents cubic...
30 cents and MCF. Now, you all are charged CCF, so it would be 3 cents of CCF.
What is your position?
I am the consultant to the Green Bush Energy Group. I was the energy manager of the Wichita Public Schools for 22 years and helped create this group.
Gotcha. Thank you. Wasn't clear on that.
It's all right.
There's a, I'd say, very good chance we're going to be selling that one building, Building D, at some point. So how does that impact?
30 days.
Okay.
30 days' notice by our contract allows us to make those switches.
All right. Is the agreement transferable to a new tenant, or would they have to renegotiate? Or is this just for municipalities and school districts?
It would have to be a not-for-profit tenant to remain a member of the Green Bush Energy Group. The contract with Intherm would be transferable with Intherm, but then they would... If they are for profit, they would have to step outside the Green Bush Energy Group. And then, any contract renewals would be between the two entities.
So if the purchase was by a not-for-profit entity, then the contract could transfer, or the agreement could transfer to them?
Yes.
But if it is profit-based, then the agreement would terminate on the sale of the building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any more questions for him, Gary?
I don't. Do you want to take action tonight, or you want to...
It's...
Give us some more thought.
Well, how do you... It's going to be between you and I on the vote. But if it is profit-based, then the agreement would terminate on the sale of the building?
Correct.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions for Gary?
I don't. Do you want to take action tonight, or you want to?
It's...
Give us some more thought.
Well, it's going to be between you and I on the vote.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with making a decision tonight, or do you desire to have?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
We do these kinds of things all the time with our industrial customers.
I reviewed the information in the packet, and your presentation and the ability to ask you questions has clarified a lot. And it doesn't look like we're putting the city at any risk with a one-year agreement. If we find it didn't work, we can terminate. If we sell the building, there's arrangements that we haven't committed to city for anything beyond our agreement. It looks to me like we're moving in the direction of the steering committee and, for the best of the city, to save money. This is something that I think we should pursue. And if we find that it isn't doing what we anticipated, there's a way out, that we don't continue to indebted the city to an agreement. So, you know, I'm comfortable proceeding with the decision. I entertain a motion.
Great. All right. Then I will move to authorize the mayor to sign a natural gas sales agreement with InThurn LLC and any related documentation.
And I'll second the motion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carried.
Appreciate it.
I'll turn the chair back over to the mayor.
Somebody wake him up. Yeah.
Okay. We are now ready for item C, correct? From the consent agenda, A. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll go straight now. I got you. All right, so consider a negotiated contract for the Peter Pan project.
However you want to do it.
Okay, go ahead. We're on item A.
Yes.
The city received an economic development grant from KDOT to improve Peter Pan, essentially in front of the hospital, which is good news. The bad news side of that is they won't let us just add that as a change order to the current contract. The explanation I received, the funding for the current GI contract has federal funds in it. The economic development money is state money, so there's a problem extending that federal project. So that created a problem for us with access to the hospital, because if we do our current project, finish it, and then do our second project, the economic development project, we're essentially closing both entrances to the hospital twice. We've got them closed now, then when we move over to do our economic development project, we're going to close them both again. So with some discussion with KDOT, we asked, well, can we use only city money with the, or local match money, I should say, to do a short extension of the GI project to just take care of the south entrance at the hospital, get that opened as part of this first project? Like, the same issue with the federal funds, extending the project applied. They recommended that we, instead of a change order, we negotiate a separate contract with the current contractor to do that short piece in front of the hospital, the south entrance. So that takes care of the access issue we're going to have with the hospital. Yeah, the slide that Kelly, the slide that Kelly has up is, shows the green area that's basically this negotiated piece that we prefer to this change order but can't. So that's what we've done. We've worked with B&amp;B Bridge, examined the unit prices. They've agreed to use the same unit prices, except a few lump sum items. They asked, we just worked out an appropriation that we feel is fair to the city. So we came up with a cost. And there is the only additional cost. It would be bonding, since it is a separate project, to get performance and payment bonds. An industry standard is around 4%, so they've asked for that 4%. And I believe that's itemized in your packet. So the...
The package come out.
Oh, okay. Okay. That totals to $108,140.24.
How much?
So that would essentially be the amount of the negotiated contract. And then, do you have the slide, Kelly, that shows the three? Essentially, the slide that's up now shows the current GI project, then our short negotiated contract project, and then the coming economic development project. And I know it's somewhat confusing or non-typical, but this is just trying to mesh all the different funding sources to get the least impact on the hospital. So then, essentially, we would follow our negotiated contract, which that does concrete paving in that portion, and then a temporary taper will be constructed out of gravel just to save money, because we're going to come in and tear out whatever we put in with our economic development project. So essentially, then, the economic development project, the city is receiving a $300,000 grant. And then, the idea we've discussed with staff is, and we'll have some different options for the commission to look at, but is if you utilized all that initial money you committed, we take out this part for the negotiated contract and then see what we can do for that. It would be in excess of what we applied for, or it should be longer than what we applied for in the economic development project. But that would be our intent to do that. So that's the next step, is if you choose to do this, then we'll be back at the next meeting to talk about how long of an economic development project we can do, but it would be at least as long as what you see there.
So that extends to where, then, Sean?
This negotiated contract is just that green area. It's just getting...
To the north end? You said the south end.
It's just getting the south entrance of the hospital encompassed in essentially this first construction project, so that we get them access, and we're not shutting them down, just two projects back to back. That's the intent of this whole exercise on this center negotiated.
So sequencing of the, what you call, the portion that we would get the economic development grant. If both entrances are including in that, you really kind of look at two projects that the contractor would have to have. He would go from the end of the geometric to a stopping point somewhere in between the two drives. Then he would have to re-mobilize north of that point to start his demolition and excavation to establish that by doing this as a negotiated and including the south entrance in. Then that one's always open. But for the next portion that has to bid, will KDOT, if we have a $450,000 maximum project, will they still give $300,000 for that?
Yeah, my understanding is yes, in conversations today.
Without another application, or will we have to?
Correct. No. It's with, under your current application, I ran this scenario, the summary of this scenario by KDOT again today, and that response was from Nell De Buckley, was yes, she's on board with basically what I described. Nell De Buckley runs the economic development portion of KDOT.
So then, what we're really looking at is the negotiated, or the bid part, is the same lineal feet of roadway that we initially applied for, just moving it north, the distance of the green.
Correct. That is exactly how I described it to KDOT. We would at least do that lineal footage and move north.
So then, with looking at that, each of us had agreed to put $150,000 in. We got the $300,000 grant. If we do the negotiated portion plus the extension, will we still be within that $150,000?
Yes. I believe you will be able to do more lineal footage for that total $750,000. You'll be able to at least do the lineal footage described in the economic development application.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I would like to see us either, you know, maintain the 150, or if we could save money at that, but not to exceed our $150,000 commitment. And, you know, of course, preferably the more we could save, but the distance of the road with the traffic count, it's going to be beneficial for safety coming and going from the emergency room. Three lane will really help turning in and out for ambulances.
Yeah, the longer we can go to the north, it really benefits the city long-term. There's, you have your potential access for an industrial park in that area as well, so...
So the $108,140.24, that's in addition to?
Yeah, we intend on taking that from that $450,000. That's basically this discussion with city staff. Then the remainder, we would package with the $300,000 grant.
So you're not asking for more, you're just going to reallocate it?
Correct.
Basically.
Correct. And the remainder would be packaged with that $300,000 grant, and we would go as far as we can, but it'll be at least as far as what you applied for. Because they agreed to give you the $300,000 grant for a $450,000 construction project. So you really had, with the grant, it's giving you extra money. And we're kind of shifting.
Maybe you got $750,000.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Questions? Other question?
No, I don't think I have any more questions.
Gary? Okay. So the motion is, then, that we approve the change, basically, for the Peter Pan project in the amount $108,124.40. Anybody care to make that motion? I move to authorize a change order to extend the Peter Pan project that is currently under construction.
It's actually a negotiated contract instead of a... What we originally put in the packet was the change order, but with the changes.
You can put that on the screen, too, when you put the motion on there.
Okay, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a negotiated contract to extend Peter Pan project that is currently under construction to LaBette's House South Side Drive in the amount of $108,140.24, pending review by city attorney and subject to approval by KDOT, LaBette Health, and Montgomery County. Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Were there comments, anybody? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B is to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of city taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2017, Textron Aviation, authorizing certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of Series 2017 bonds, and approving the payment of a series of 2007 bonds and Textron Aviation's exercise of its option to purchase the Series 2007 improvements.
Okay.
Dominic Eck is here from Gilmore &amp; Bell, bond attorney. He can answer your questions or explain it further.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I am Dominic Eck. I'm with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the city's bond counsel. Before you tonight, we have an ordinance with two purposes, both related to the Textron industrial revenue bond process that occurs annually. One request from Textron is to issue $625,000 in new industrial revenue bonds. It'd be Series 2017. This money would be, or has been, used to purchase equipment, tooling, make building improvements to the Textron facilities. Along with these bonds, Textron would receive a property tax abatement for 10 years for all these improvements that are financed by this series of bonds, and also would be eligible for a sales tax exemption for the purchase of these improvements. These bonds would be issued under the original LOI that the city has with Textron and its predecessors. And these bonds will not affect the city's credit rating. The city has no financial obligations. The bonds are payable only from the lease revenues the city receives by leasing these improvements to Textron. Textron will also own the bonds, so they will be lender and borrower on the same side of that ledger. These bonds would be issued under a 14th supplemental indenture, and the lease of the improvements back to Textron would be under a 14th supplemental lease. So that is the new request. Textron also requests to retire the Series 2007 IRBs that the city issued. The ad valorem property tax for the abatement for the improvements financed by the 2007 series expires at the end of this year. So Textron wishes to retire those bonds and have the city transfer title to those improvements back to Textron. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Just clear as mine.
Questions? A couple of months ago, we had some bonds, and we transferred the property back now. This is in addition to what we did a month or so ago. Another bond and another portion of property that we had leased to them. Is that correct?
Correct. This, for the payoff of the 2007 bonds, this would be what would be probably commonly referred to as part of the equipment bonds. And so this would be transferring title to a portion of the equipment that was financed in 2007 back. I believe what you may be referring to from a couple of months back would be when more of the building bonds and transferring some of that land back. And that process has been done, or in the process of being completed, as we speak, to get the land title transferred back to Textron, and then we'll have a site lease back to the city, so that if there were a default under any of these equipment leases, the city would have the right to go on to the property, take the equipment if they had to sell the bonds. But again, since Textron also is the owner of bonds, a default situation is pretty unlikely.
And then that property goes on the tax basis, their tax status on that portion of the bond is expired also?
Correct. The equipment that we would transfer back to Textron would be eligible to be taxed on an ad valorem basis then.
Okay.
Questions, Gary? Okay, I know, I saw Paula. She's there. Paula, you have anything you'd like to add?
He can.
You're going to go through all those legal terms, Paula?
No.
Okay. No further questions by the commission, then we can entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Marco? I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2017, to Textron Aviation, authorizing certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of the Series 2017 bonds, and approving the payment of the Series 2007 bonds and Textron Aviation's exercise of its options to purchase the Series 2007 improvements.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll take the first C, which is, under the commission action, we'll consider rescinding the condemnation action for property located at 914 North 6. Don?
Yes. So I have to apologize to the homeowner and to the commissioners. I had missed something as we went through our meeting this morning to go over the agenda. There's a portion of the roof in the back, on the photos, you can see that there was access given, taken by firefighters to access that area. access given, taken by firefighters to access that area to fight a fire several years ago when there was a fire that hadn't been repaired. I missed that. I don't know how I missed it, but I did miss that. So that needs to be fixed, and I need to inspect that before I can really bring this before you. And I didn't know at that time that actually this had been brought before in December 2014, initially to be considered for condemnation, that there were two fires at this location two different times. And so before I do that, really do want to look at the repairs and look at that area to make sure, so that I can feel a little more comfortable about it. There's, for a long time, there's been steady repairs doing it, but in the last months or so, there's been a lot of work done to it, and like I say, I apologize. I missed that area and not saying that, so probably shouldn't have brought it forward at this time to be considered. But the property owner is here, and I think might want to speak. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Don, when were the pictures that are shown here? Are these recent?
Today.
Today, okay.
Yes.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Angela Widdit.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been working on this house for a while, and I have been working on the house since May of this year, because I'm getting it in the divorce. And I've got it to the point where it's got brand-new electrical, brand-new plumbing, brand-new gas lines. It's, to me, livable. He was out a week ago, and he had said that it was ready to go, and that it was, the only thing that needed to do was to paint the outside, but thought I could wait until the spring to do that. And then I got a phone call this morning that said I, all of a sudden, that there's plywood on the roof, which there was, I didn't realize there was, but there was plywood on the roof, and that until that's fixed, I can't get it off the list. And I, you know, I'm trying to get my home. So I got my ex-husband over there, and what it is, is it was little slits in the roof. It wasn't like a hole. And he repaired it, and I took a picture, and I have it with me for that. I did send him a text message this afternoon and ask him if he could come over there, and he said that he couldn't. He was over there this morning, and I don't know exactly why, because I happened over there. I left, when I left work and went home, I went on over to the Sixth Street house, and he was there under my house. I didn't know why, but anyway.
So you're asking us to go ahead and take action rather than waiting 12 days?
I'm asking that I be allowed to move into my home. I mean, there's heat, I have a refrigerator stove, I mean, everything's on, I'm picking for utilities, and I can't use the house. Windows are replaced.
Is there some way we can give approval based on your inspection tomorrow, or?
Well, we're not, the city's not open tomorrow. I'm not working tomorrow. I'll be going to Kansas City, but, I mean, in light of there being two fires, I'd feel more comfortable inspecting that. I didn't know that there was two fires till today. I wasn't aware. This was condemned before I came on. I didn't know of all the history of it. I'd feel a little more comfortable. I am empathetic, as I've said. There's been a lot of activity in the last month. I am empathetic to that, but I do still, in fairness to everybody else that has to go through the complete process and have everything done, I think that's what's fair. And I admit, I did miss it, should have addressed it earlier, but it didn't, and I think, I think the next commission meeting is when we should address it. That's my opinion.
May I also state, there were two different, or at least I know, one electrician that came into the house that passed it. Has brand-new electrical, has brand-new box, because it had knob and tube before when it had both those fires, and now it has brand-new electrical throughout the entire house. Greer Electric had come out and approved it. He also had asked to gain access about a week ago, and asked that somebody else look at the box. I was at work, I couldn't leave, but I asked my niece to let him in the house, and he could go through and look at whatever he needed to, and he did. And I was told it was fine, it was a go.
Well, we apologize for that oversight.
And I do apologize for that, but, I mean, the electrical is a separate issue than this. This is a structural consideration. And like I say, I am empathetic. As I pointed out, I don't have the, I don't have the authority to say that it's going to come off the list or not come off the list. I only have power to make recommendations.
Sure.
And my recommendation is to wait for the next meeting as we ask everybody to make sure that it passes the full HQS. I did say initially that, you know, the painting, if she would promise to do it to the spring, that I would talk to you about, you know, saying that, but since this is, since I have learned today that there were two fires, I would feel a little more comfortable looking at the repairs before doing that.
Well, it seems like some of it is going to be overlapped in the repair work, that if there's a fire inside and it damaged through the ceiling, then the structure's got to be repaired to do the finish work. So there should have been a point that prior to you being employed, that that was looked at by the previous building inspector. I could understand the damage to the shingles, but, you know, if there was no holes, large hole under the plywood, or if, as many rains as we've had, there's no leaks, and it's strong as the wind.
Right.
Now, this is really an awkward position for everyone.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, to have a situation where, you know, you're expending funds, but you can't live there, and with the technicality and understanding, you know, tomorrow is not possible to go look at.
We could look at it next week, and if you, it's the commission's decision, it's not my decision, it's your decision to me.
It is, to me, it feels like extenuating circumstances. I mean, I understand you made a mistake, I don't fault you for that, I make mistakes every day, but on the other hand, if she needs to move in, could we let her go ahead and move in, give her a temporary approval or something until you get a chance to look at it?
Is there some sort of legal?
On the spot, I know.
I don't think there's anything in our condemnation, it's a state statute condemnation. Usually, when a house is being condemned, it's so bad, nobody's living there anyway. And once we start that process, we say it's got to pass this inspection, which, to be quite honest, might put the house in a better position than it was before the fire occurred, for all I know.
Sure. Makes sense.
There's nothing in the statute that says she can't move in today. We're just saying it hasn't passed inspection yet. I don't know that you want to take action and say, we gave you permission to move in, because then it will...
Table it.
Yeah, table it. If she moves in, just, it's up to the enforcement. You know, if he came, Don came to me, said, she moved back in, what shall I do? I don't know that you can make her move out, to be honest. That's why, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not encouraging that, because I don't know the condition of the house.
I think you just did.
We did replace all the wood up, because they, they had to take down all of the ceiling.
The decking?
No, and there was wood that was reinforced up there in different rooms, and all of the ceilings had been replaced with new sheet rock.
What about the roof decking, though?
I know that there was some repair, that we had another gentleman in there that did repair work on the upper part of it, so.
I don't see any way we can approve this, but I just don't see any way we can approve this until Don says it's ready to be approved. But on the other hand, it sounds like you could go ahead and move in, and we're not going to...
Well, he said to me that there was a $500 fine if I moved in, that the fine started at $500, so I was scared to move in.
With good reason, I would say.
I don't know.
Now, it's kind of a unique structure that we started condemnation before you, Don, and work had been done a lot before you got there.
I'm an empathetic person. I really am.
You know, if, we've discussed too about the 75%, that, you know, we've had some fires recently, that the structures were not condemned, where we in the past had condemned them, and looking at this one, would, if it fell in the same category where we haven't condemned the recent fires because they lacked the extent of damage, and it is her property, and, you know, if she moves in, she moves in.
You know, it's, I'm just trying to do what I've been asked to do. So I think I'm kind of being put here between a rock and a hard place.
Yes, you are.
And I have been, you know, I think some things have been said and portrayed. I've been empathetic the whole time, and I've been understanding the whole time. There's been an activity in the last month, a lot of activity in the last month, whereas there's not been nearly as much activity in the months before. If we can look at it next week and we're good to go...
So if there was a date, just, I'm just thinking out loud, which is dangerous, I know. But if you, if we were to set a date that by the commission meeting date, what's 21st, whatever the date is, that, I mean, there is statutorily, there's a fine. Is that?
I'm sure there's an ordinance.
An ordinance, I mean.
It talks about dangerous and unsafe, I don't know.
If it's not by such-and-such a date, then...
It's not a rental problem. I don't know what ordinance.
Like, right now, it's not dangerous and unsafe.
I read my code book here.
Well, it hadn't passed the inspection. And how long would it take for the work to be finished, in your estimation?
Well, according to her, it's done. I haven't seen it. I mean, I got a text about 4 o'clock to look at it, but I had somebody waiting in my office to get a permit at 4 o'clock, so that wasn't possible for me to go over there and do that.
You could accept her statement and her picture as evidence and say it's done. And it's, nothing against Don, because he just hasn't had time to do it, if you want to do that.
I mean, we're talking about, you know, should it be condemned? No, probably shouldn't remain condemned in its condition right now, no. But has it passed the HQS inspection? Technically, no. And I don't have the power to make those executive decisions. Thank heavens.
Well, it can be done Monday. The inspection can be done.
Yes, sure.
And you were going to move in yesterday.
Yes. Mr. Johnson, I'm afraid they're ready to be moved.
My suggestion is good, that we can accept it, and if it's not, I mean, if it's not completed, then we can go from there.
Right.
I mean, I'm the one that's always pushing for consistency with the policy, so.
This is a little outside the norm.
Yeah, I got you.
Do you want to just table the rescinding it to the next meeting on the 21st, but Jeff doesn't think there's any penalty for her moving in, so just handle it that way, and that way we can...
What would be the best way to do it?
Trust and verify.
I think we need to go ahead for consistency to do the inspection.
Yeah.
And based upon your findings, but to...
That's where I'm coming from.
For us to address her moving in, I think that's beyond our scope. It's up to you. You make the decision what to do. We'll do what we need to do and do the inspection. You make the decision whether to move in.
And then you can inspect it Monday, and...
Works for me.
We're good.
Because a fine can be charged, but it might not be assessed, or the fine might not be charged at all, too, you know? You know what I'm saying? I can't tell you what to do or what not to do. But you make the decision what you need to do, and Don will do what he needs to do.
Okay? Yep, you...
Clear as mud again.
You understand?
I don't.
You guess?
Maybe my chances, I suppose.
There's no chance. Just do.
Probably going to work out.
Do what you need to do.
I think they're saying this.
So then we would entertain a motion then that we rescind condemnation based upon...
Well, I thought you were going to table it until the 21st.
Right.
Sure, that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let Don do his job. Thanks for coming.
All right. Now we're ready for item C from the consent agenda, which is to consider the first quarter treasurer's report.
All right, gentlemen. Leonard had sent a couple of questions out today, and just wanted to run over those to give you some clarification on those items. Leonard, you'd sent six. We're going to talk about a couple of other ones that are going to kind of tie back into it, and I'm going to bounce around just a little bit here, because there's three of those that are going to be tied together, so.
On my question on line 20, the terminal upgrade where we had the grant.
Yes.
Are we still eligible? Can we still receive that grant?
We are, we are. So Mike Conway has been working with Lochner and KDOT. We've got them, all the drawings and everything that they need on that. They're looking them over, and we're still going to be able to resubmit on that.
Okay, that was my question dealing with that, that we still can receive that grant.
Absolutely, yeah. We are good. I think he was just in contact with them just this last week on this.
On the T-Hanger, line 23.
T-Hanger, we are in the process on that also of finishing up some last requests for draws on that grant.
That's another grant.
That we'll clean that up.
Okay. On 25, the CDBG.
25, okay.
Which grant?
This is Basin 5. So this is where this is going to get a little tricky in talking about it, and I don't have a definitive answer for you right this second. The CDBG grant for that Basin 5, that was a million-dollar project on that piece of it. We had a half-million dollars from the CDBG, and then the other piece of it was going to be funded from the KDHE revolving loan. So some of, we've made certain draws on that loan. It doesn't look like we have. Sean and I have been in the process of trying to close out that loan. We did a renewal here a while back, but before we submitted the renewal in, we needed to get these completed, and we've been auditing and reconciling some of these requests and drawdowns on that loan to make sure that we have them itemized to the proper projects. I think we've made some requests and got some advances, and they've got pushed to other projects inadvertently. So if you look down on both Fund 89, which you also questioned.
Yeah.
And you also look at Fund 95, I think that that's all tied together.
And then, then that drops down to Kansas Public Water Supply Pollution Control, where the South Lift Station, the figure was $2,197,544. That was part of our $4 million KDOT, so...
No, not yet, KDHE.
KDHE, yeah.
That's correct.
So that's what I...
There's there, and so with that, I think, and we're going to continue on with this even next week, and Sean, I don't know that there's anything he really needs to address on this, but can, there's still about another $300,000 that still needs to be advanced off that before we close that out and initiate that other one. So with that, that'll get all these things cleaned up and brought back to zero balance.
That was a major question with those seeing the negative, knowing we had the $4 million loan from KDHE, but not seeing that we had drawn down beyond the 2.1 million.
So there's a little piece sitting out there, and I can't explain why, that it's, there's, when the Basin 5 started, it looks like it got put in with the Southeast Lift Station, but then another project fund was created specifically for Basin 5, so I think that there's some pieces there moving between those two, and I think when one of those advances was coming in, it was put against the... it was put against the, the CDBG PF-14 as opposed to the PF-15. I, I think it was just an inadvertent recognition of that, of those monies.
If we don't show that we have drawn almost the 4 million of the KDHE loan, then it appears that we're paying for those projects out of other funds somewhere else. And they should kind of.
And they're not, and they're not. It'll be coming out of this. We've just got to get it finished, cleaned up.
Okay. Now, this has been a question quite a.
It has, and it.
It's confusing, too.
And, and just learning these projects, they, they've been around for a while, and different advances have made. So we're, we're trying to really understand exactly every advance that was made, and it's gotten applied to the proper place.
Kind of be handy to have a, a legend that would list CBDG, but then what common name project it is, so when we look at it, it'd be easier.
Yeah, I had to go in there and look it up myself, because these, these were mostly finished before I came on it, so. I, I had to go ask a few questions on that myself.
Okay. That answers most. The line 31 on the airport showed negative. Is that just in, in the bookkeeping process of expenses?
Sometimes it's a moment in time.
It is. We're, we're just taking a snapshot of today. It could be, it'd be different yesterday, and it'd be different tomorrow, anytime you're looking at these. And so we, we have taken that snapshot. You got to keep in mind, our checking account is just a big pie.
Right.
And so everything comes in there with these, like the airport or sanitation or sewer fund. They can, from time to time, month to month, show a negative balance. There's not a negative balance in the, in the bank account. The pie is still full. It's just, we don't, we don't go in there as, as a normal course of a, a budgeted fund and transfer and offset those deficit balances. This particular month, and then you'll, you'll see it again in April, it, it is back to a positive balance, just so you know. But it, it was just a timing thing. We had some very large purchases of fuel that were not ordinary for that particular month.
And this is for the quarters, so this is for three months.
Yeah, but really what drove it was March.
Okay.
March drove that into the negative. It was positive in February. March drove, drove it negative. So typically, I think those fuel purchases run around 20, 30,000, and it was about double that. So you had that, and then in addition, we had growth in, in our AR that also dwindled that down. So a combination of both. We've also seen the AR come down, which replenishes the cash.
Last year, I think the, the Airport Fund had some problems. And that's, but you know, here we're towards the end of the year, and this is first quarter report projecting where are we going to be?
Yeah.
Now here.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's just a timing issue, what you're seeing right here. Checkbook balances, though, right? Yeah. That's what's.
That means the, that means the cash is. Okay. Other questions?
And you, you had a question on the quality of life.
Right, it showed receipt. Is that just interest?
Yeah, the receipt, it was just interest.
Interesting, okay.
Checking interest, that's all it was.
Okay. Yeah, that was, you know, to see on a.
That's the only.
Sales tax.
There's no new money coming into that, other than just interest.
After I sent that, I was looking at it, and it, oh yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Interest. Okay. That was it?
Okay. Fred, Gary, anything I can get for you on this? Okay. Okay, so to entertain a motion then, we approve the March 31st.
I make a motion that we approve the quarterly report for March 31st, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then item D from the consent agenda was consider naming the property at Northwest Corner of Penn and Chestnut Celebration Park.
Looking at, at the park and some of the things that were, were presented with the sculptures of the children, and, you know, looking back what Roger Brooks talked about getting involvement. He talked about some champions, you know, to drive forward. I thought, you know, with the park, to maybe tie ownership with the children as a statue, kind of emphasizing the, the impact of the children in our community. I think they were facing a flagpole, am I, is that right? What is it possible, or maybe to stir some interest by having a, a park naming contest with, say, high school students to show the picture of the, of the statues and the flagpole, and then solicit to them what it means to be a citizen, or what it means to them to have been raised and independence. And with that, you know, they would have the opportunity to express their ideas, but also then express it to a name to consider for the park. And, you know, it, it might be an opportunity to go beyond us that are, are making decisions all the time to encourage them to express their ideas, that you could even elaborate farther in other areas of, of the children or students that have seen independence from a different viewpoint than we have and are currently looking at it, to give them the opportunity to take something new in town and tie, tie it to them. You know, it wasn't, I'm objecting to the name. I'm just saying, you know, maybe, do we have an opportunity to go beyond what we normally do and stir some young life tying to, to the new park?
I agree with you. I, I think that that would be a great idea in some respects. The Pride Committee that has worked on this park toyed with lots of different names and ideas, and the reason why they came up with Celebration Park was to tie into the name of the sculpture. Because the name of the sculpture that has been commissioned for that property, which is an original piece, is called Celebrate Independence. So we thought, what better name for the park would be Celebrate, Celebration Park? And so that's how the name came about. So, and there, I, I, I like your idea of bringing the kids into it, and so that might be something that the Pride Committee wants to champion when we go take the next step at the, you know, on, on the property. Maybe there's some way that we can tie in some element of activity with the youth of our community, so.
Okay. Well, that explains, you're basically using the name of the artwork to.
Yes.
For that to identify the park. Okay. Yeah, it just, you know, seems, well, we have opportunities to reach beyond, you know, like, like you're working with the Diversity Task Force to get new, new shoes under the table to encourage new involvement that, and, and future action at the park or your events could, could do the same thing, so, okay.
And I would just piggyback on that, though, Leonard, because I, I think that naming the other two parks would be great in our community. We have Pride Park that's down on South 10th Street, and now if you approve the, the name of Celebration Park, the other two parks in, that are in those neighborhoods are not named, that I'm aware of.
South 17th Park or Wald Street Park.
Yeah, yeah, they don't have official names, so that might be something where you could champion the youth of our community, and in particular, the youth that live around those neighborhood parks.
Right. Yeah. And to have a, more of a buy-in and, and a pride to their neighborhood park. It is theirs then.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the naming of the 401 North Penn Avenue Park Area Celebration Park.
I'll check on that. Okay. All those in favor then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, we're ready now for our city board minutes from the rec mission, a chance to read those. And we have an extra item, and I believe we have a deal here for Ed, an attachment or some sort of updated information. This is considered an agreement with Montgomery County regarding maintenance of a portion of North Peter Pan Road. Craig, or who's that? Kelly?
This was something actually Jeff worked on with Paul Kreitz, the county counselor, on putting together an agreement to maintain that road. I think, as you recall, when they agreed to do the 150,000 each split three ways, that the county wanted the city to, to participate with maintenance, and the county said they would also continue to help with snow removal and things like that. So Jeff has worked on an agreement that he put together that you have before you, and the county is okay with it. So the county has approved it, so we are requesting that you approve it as well, so we can move along with this.
So the county has approved this?
Yes.
No, the, the council approved it. It hasn't gone before the council, the commissioners yet for action at the county level.
Does the length of the road include what we discussed tonight with negotiated contract and the additional bid project? Okay.
The 1437.
1437 was what the original plan was. I don't know if it would cover any extension, but. In other words, if you, you were going to stretch it a little further if you had the money?
Correct, yeah, the 1437 covers what's shown there. If we were lucky enough to go farther than that, it would have.
All the way to the blood, into the blood?
Yeah.
That's further than.
We could, we could leave the exact number of feet open until that number is known and plug it in when it's not.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
That was the only question, was the, the length of, of pavement if it took into account the, the full extent of the project.
Okay, so then, entertain a motion then to approve the agreement with Montgomery County regarding the maintenance of a portion of North Peter Pan Road, and I would make that a motion. One second. All those, any other questions, maybe?
No.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commission comments.
I did have a couple of things I wanted to ask about or mention, the downtown trees. We still got those in mind for the, the ones that have died off during the summer. We talked about replanting them in the fall, I think.
Oh, can I back you guys up for just a moment?
No, I want to talk about trees, dude.
I'm, I want to get right back to your trees. I need you guys to approve the amended agenda, the extra item. Oh. We've got to do that now, because we're approving. I'd make a motion that we amend the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're good. Now trees.
Some of the trees were guaranteed, I believe. We had a lot of them die during the summer.
Yeah, some of them were under warranty.
Yeah.
I'm not sure when they're going to relocate those. I don't see Barb here, so we can get back with you on that.
That would be great. Last time I brought up, they said they'd be planted in the fall when it was better tree planting time. The other thing, on June 22nd, we authorized bids for the removal of five structures that I don't, I don't believe we've seen again. It's been six months or five months. I, I drive past one of them every day. It's driving me crazy.
Okay, we'll check into that.
Part of it was we're waiting on asbestos.
Yeah, but it's been five months. The 1124 West Main, the roof has collapsed now, and it's just, seems like, seems like we need to pick up the pace if we can. I'm assuming that city staff is just very busy.
One on 700 blocks, South 6th, severely fire damaged, it's open.
I, I'm not exactly certain, because there was five of them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I know contracts been sent out to the, to the companies. Yeah, to the noticeable award. Waiting on getting those back. We were waiting on, on the asbestos, which has just come back in in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, wonderful.
So it should be starting at any, any given point in time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Does the contractor, are they, in their contract responsible for asbestos? Or are we doing that separately?
We, we do that separate. We have to do, have that all done, taken care of, remediated. Don's got, I think, just one company does it. It's kind of a slow process, held it up. And once, once we got that done, then he was able to, we were able to go ahead and go forward with that. So should see something in the next few weeks.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, Leonard?
I don't have any.
Question I had tonight, or comment I'd have is ask Craig and staff a question about where the, you know, efficiency part of trying to make City Hall more effective, more energy efficient. We talked about that. There's that $500,000 from Mercy. What are we, where are we at in the process? Are we looking at doing it? Where are we at?
Right, yeah, we've been looking at that cost benefit of, of, you know, restructuring the electrical. As you know, due to the type of building it is, the hospital, we're spending a lot of money on electrical that we normally wouldn't in an office building, due to the exchange, air exchange. So we've looked at cost benefit. Of course, we, probably more than a year ago, you had consultants look at that, what would cost to, you know, change the electrical to produce some savings. And initially, there were figures of four, 450,000 if you did everything recommended, and would see a savings. I think it was around 50%. There was another consultant that said maybe 75% in that range. But then nothing was hap, nothing took place. In the last few months, we've been looking at it again. We've had the consultants look at it again. We actually put out an RFP. Mike can speak more directly of that. In fact, the, the proposals were due today, and we got one proposal.
Yeah.
And Mike can talk more about that.
I can't remember the exact number of, of emails, packages we sent, sent out on the RFP. That was done about a month ago. We had a mandatory meeting last week. Only one contractor showed up for that, and subsequently, when the RFPs were due today, we only got one quote.
Is this the same one that gave us the original one?
It is, it is.
That's BCS?
Yeah, BCS. In this, we ask them to break it down into two phases. One that is, comes at a substantially cheaper cost. It's not going to give us all the savings potentially that are there, but it's pretty economical. Think that we can have a pretty good payback from a time standpoint on that. Phase two, there's a bigger piece to it. It's quite more expensive, so we do have that broken down. Now that we have the information, we can begin to analyze and, and understand what those numbers are. We'll probably have some more conversations with the contractor, and then at which point in time we feel comfortable with everything, we'll, we'll bring that analysis back here to the commission for you all to evaluate.
All right. Anything else?
Now, the big, the big electrical expense is the imaging equipment. Is there part of it to separate that out to a separate meter system and?
When, not, not separate meter system. One thing that we discussed when, when they came in, and it, it wasn't part of the RFP, so they're, they're including that as an additional option, and that would be actually putting in, and I can't remember the, the name of it, a, a different unit that would tie back into the air handlers but would not be part of the existing chillers. So there, thereby such, we could zone that down and, and completely isolate that, that portion of the building.
The big expense is, is when a CAT scan or MRI energizes the equipment itself. It's not in the HVAC system. The energizing of the equipment is such a draw on the demand at that time, it sets a peak demand. So your energy then, once you've set the peak, is based upon that peak for the rest of the month, even though you might have only used that piece of equipment for one time. The other savings are staging or staggering motor starters, so that, like on an HVAC system, an air handler, you don't start all your air handlers at one time, because that sets the peak, too.
Exactly.
That's, that's a pretty efficient one, but the, the, the demand on the imaging equipment hits all at once. Anytime, you know, that first initial, if they do one image a month, it can set the peak.
So with the, with what we ask for, there are certain meters that can be put in with our existing meters. And working through the controls of what they're installing, with their computer system, it would set that, so if we began to hit that peak demand, it would start shutting other things down, where that would be isolated, that we wouldn't be taking that one down. So it would just, I, I would rather let someone, more expertise on that and get into the details on that piece of it.
Yeah, some of the things they were talking about is slowing down the air volume to the rooms, which becomes kinda difficult because of the duct size is used to determine CFM also. So when you slow a fan down, you start affecting your pressure, which affects the temperature in the room, too. But staggering motors or being able to stage, like right now, it's all 24/7, the same thing. You reduce it back to timers, taking out office area, then it can be reverted back to a healthcare with minimal expense.
Yeah, well, and another piece of this is, as I'm learning through the process, controlling those outside vents, because there's been restrictions because of the hospital. So with that, we haven't been able to open up those vents, which causes the chillers to continue to run, and run, and run in times where we don't need them to run, when we can be bringing in that cooler air from the outside.
Yeah.
And that will all be part of that phase one that we're gonna be looking at.
Okay, I'd like to see us move forward with that. Any other, I don't have any public concerns, Mike, there was not.
No, there was none.
Okay, adjournment then, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you make the motion? Or did you make the motion?
I did.
He made the motion, he seconded it.
Yeah.